Good evening, Councilmember Toby Gilli has our prayer and pledge. Mr. Gilli?
Thank you, Mayor. If you would bow with me, please. Dear God, our most loving and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day that you have given us that was not promised to us. We thank you for this great and wonderful city in which we live. Father, tonight, ask your blessings and comfort with those in our community of recently lost, loved ones due to tragedy and other reasons, and those who have illnesses in their families. May you bless and take care of them. Father, tonight, as we come here as a council to make decisions for this city, ask that you please give us your guidance and wisdom. In the name of your son's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening, and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, July 11, 2013. I hope everyone has dried out from the Fourth of July, and we certainly enjoyed the fireworks, which we went on, but hopefully we will get to listen to the symphony at another time this year. But we had a tremendous number of folks out to see the fireworks. It was a great display and certainly grand to celebrate our nation's other birthday. So it's great to enjoy that. It's great to have a number of people here with us tonight. We're always looking forward to folks who visit with us and attend our council meeting. Some are shorter and some are longer, so we always make it where you're free to go or free to stay. You're not, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. If you're here just for certain items, then you can stay there, but if you would like to stay for the whole meeting, we certainly welcome that and we welcome your attendance. Councilmembers, are there any other announcements before we begin? If not, you have your consent agenda before you. Are there any questions regarding any of the items on our consent agenda? And if not, is there a motion that we accept?
Seeing none, Mayor, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
What did that say?
Yeah. I learned to talk backwards.
He can repeat that, I think.
Move for approval.
Motion and second. Please call the robe, Miss Tucker.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You have before you the minutes of the May 23, 2013 special meeting, the May 23, 2013 regular meeting, the June 3, 2013 special meeting, the June 6, 2013 regular meeting, the June 13 regular meeting, and the June 20, 2013 regular meeting. All of those meetings, which were special meetings and those that followed, certainly had something to do with our budget, looking at that through the years, as we look for next year's budget. So, councilmembers, are there any questions or alterations, deletions to those minutes as they've been presented?
Not mayor, I move for adoption of the minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Gilli, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, please call the robe, Miss Tucker.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll ask Shannon Logan to step up and thank you. You're already here, because I should have started with you, but I don't know, senior moment, I suppose. But we're happy that you're here to talk about our Stars Award winners for this month. Good.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor tonight to bring before you a team of individuals who are this month's Stars Award winners. I would like to say that we're very proud of our employees here at the city of Murfreesboro. They make it a priority every day to provide good customer service to our community, and I think that you'll notice that the individuals tonight have exemplified just that. This is our second award to members of the Water and Sewer Department, so they're obviously doing something very good over there, Darren. This will be the second time that his department has received the Stars Award. But I would like to recognize tonight Mr. Terry Taylor, Mr. Dale Richardson, Mr. Steve Richardson, Mr. Andy Landrum, Mr. Josh Alcorn, Mr. Dana McKinney, and Mr. Ben Weatherford. If all of them will please come to the podium, and Mr. Darren Gore, who is the department head. I wanted to mention that Mr. Tracy Wilkins of the golf course is who nominated this crew for their outstanding work on what they did to help him with the bad situation that he faced back in the spring, back in April. And because of this crew, he saved the city thousands and thousands of tax dollars that would have had to go to do something else if it wasn't for Terry and this crew of employees behind me. Not only were they, went above and beyond the call of duty, they were so courteous, and he noted how well they worked together as a team. And I think that sometimes we always forget about that, that just how important it takes for teams to work together to accomplish the goals that we need to set forward here for the city of Murfreesboro. He noticed that their cooperation and their service, and just how kind and friendly they were to everyone while they were working on the golf course, what that really meant. And he was so proud of them that he nominated them for this Stars Award. And the committee that reviews the Stars just thought that it really showed and exemplified everything that the Stars Awards should be about. And that is teamwork, being courteous, treating each other with dignity and respect, and putting the needs of the citizens first and foremost. And that's why we're honored tonight to have all of them here. And if we could, I'm going to give each one of them, or Mr. Gore actually wants to say a couple of words, and he'll give each one of them their certificates. We also have something probably Mayor wants to say a couple of words, but if we could just give them a round of applause for what... You know, sometimes the jobs throughout are not always the most visible or the most glamorous, but they're still important. And so I'm glad that we're able to recognize that tonight.
That's a good picture over here. Turn sideways, I could step up against the seats up there.
Delway.
I'll say a couple of things while they're getting poised for the picture. I think it just, it means a lot to me from the standpoint that these guys are getting this award for servicing an internal customer, which the golf course is one of our biggest repurified and reused customers. And I think we fortunately, through the council's leadership and our Water and Sewer Board's leadership, have given us the proper equipment, safety equipment, and tools necessary to go in and handle and do some big line construction. So these guys are skilled and they know exactly what they're doing. It was a little bit bigger job than what the, a little bit bigger than an irrigation line, so Tracy knew his limitations, and he called us in. And these guys came out there, and like I said, with the courtesy and the skills to handle it. So I couldn't be prouder of them. So, and of course Terry, can't speak enough about Terry. He is, he's helping me as a new director navigate a lot of potholes, so he's helping me out. So Terry, thank you very much, buddy.
Good man.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to let Darren get the money. I thought I was...
Well, Dale Richardson's foreman of the crews, appreciate you, Dale.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Landrum, crew leader.
Appreciate it.
Steve Richardson?
Appreciate that.
Josh Alcorn?
Josh, thank you. I don't have any fights with him. I miss you in Georgia.
Ben Weatherford's not here with us, but give him a shout out. He's, I think he's doing, he's got a baby class tonight, so congratulations to him. And Dana McKinney?
All right, Dan. Appreciate that.
Oh, and the checks here. You can hand those out, too. All right, guys. Take care, Mr. Young. While we are particularly proud of this group tonight... We certainly are proud of all our employees, and we appreciate their efforts with our residents and with our families and our business owners and our visitors. They really make our city fun to live in and well taken care of, and we appreciate your efforts. And thank you for our Stars program, a tremendous job. And you have something else for us?
I just wanted to say that, as you can see, it's a pleasure to be able to present our Stars Awards every month to our city employees. And for those at home who are watching, if you see something that one of our city employees does, please contact us and let us know so that we can make sure all of our Stars are getting recognized.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Logan, and thank you for making this award special to our employees. We appreciate those efforts. And Mr. Wilkins, for making that recommendation. Good job. All right, before you consider for passage on second reading an ordinance amending Chapter 29 Schools, Section 29-2, Regarding Compensation of School Board Members.
Move for passing.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman.
Second.
And Mr. Gilli, a second. Please call the robe, Miss Tucker.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by the city council on June 13, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 62.94 acres along Memorial Boulevard from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District, to Highway Commercial CH District, and 15.39 acres from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District, to Commercial Fringe CF District. Mr. Brick Murfree is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the June 23, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, you look different tonight.
Do I?
Yes.
My name's different, too.
Has you had an event in your life?
I did. I'm recently married. This past Saturday, married Mr. Christopher Green.
Mr. Christopher Green, congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's give her a round of applause. We expect to continue to see that big smile for a long, long time.
I think you will. As a matter of fact, I couldn't bear to miss this meeting, so a honeymoon will have to wait.
Oh, my. Oh, that may cost for more compensation.
Just saying.
Ms. Green, would you please take over?
Yes, sir. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider changing the zone of properties located along the western side of Memorial Boulevard, also Highway 231. This property, the properties consist of 18 parcels, and they're identified on the maps that you have before you. These properties are owned by various property owners who have gathered together to make one application for a zoning change. The properties that are located to the north, to the west, are zoned RS 15, Single Family Residential District. Properties to the south are zoned CH Commercial Highway District and Medical Commercial Residential District. Across Memorial Boulevard is the State Farm Development, which is Zone CP, which is a form of Planned Commercial District. There's also another PCD zoning, some Office General zoning, and Commercial Local District zoning. The properties are located north of Haynes Drive, and you can see that they're bounded by both Haynes Drive and Memorial Boulevard. This area was annexed in 1979, and in 1984, with the city's comprehensive planning efforts, was zoned RS 15, so they are all zoned RS 15 at the present time. The request is for you to consider zoning the area shaded orange to CH Highway Commercial District, and that consists of approximately 62 acres. And the second part of the request is to zone a 250-foot wide strip, which is shaded blue on the map before you, along the existing residential development to CF Commercial Fringe District. Our CH District does allow a wider variety of commercial uses, and the CF District allows fewer types of commercial districts, and also has some additional design regulations for the property. There's an area which we've been referring to as a notch that is located adjacent to some of the existing houses. There's, it's anticipated that although there is no development plan at this time, and there's nothing in the imminent future, that any sort of development would require drainage infrastructure to be in that area, which we're calling a notch. And so that, from our neighborhood meeting and from the public hearing, heard concerns from the resonance of the drainage in the area. And so Mr. Sam Huddleston, of course, is here this evening, and Mr. Adelad and myself who can answer questions about our planning efforts as regards that. There are also questions regarding the condition of Haynes Drive, and that it needs to be improved, and certainly that would be our expectation. And Mr. Dana Richardson did present his testimony to the Planning Commission at their meetings. Initially, the request was to zone all these properties plus two additional properties to CH Commercial Highway District. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission deferred action to study this matter a little bit more in depth. And after studying the matter, their recommendation is for you to zone a 250-foot buffer to CF and then the remaining property to CH. The Planning Commission did make a recommendation unanimously that the property be zoned such on June 5, and they deferred their decision to a meeting where it was televised meeting because we know that folks are interested in this topic. Mr. Brick Murfree is representing the applicant as well as Mr. Randy Caldwell. They've asked me to ask you to allow them an opportunity to make a brief presentation before your public hearing. If you have any questions regarding this matter, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Murfree?
Thank you, Ms. Green, or Mrs. Green, I guess. I'm Brick Murfree of the law firm of Murfree &amp; Murfree. And I just, Mayor Bragg, members of the city council, I represent the applicants, which are 11 properties, 54.7 acres, and it's nine families, and it's on the corner of Haynes Boulevard and Memorial, and it's that corner across from State Farm. Having these owners before you, together with one request, will result in a well-designed future commercial development, which will give the neighbors the best possible result and will give the city the best possible result for this very visible corner of Murfreesboro. We realize that there's a drainage problem in this area. We realize that will have to be addressed before any development can occur, and we realize that you will not allow site plans to be approved unless we can solve those drainage We had a public hearing and neighborhood meetings. At Planning Commission, we had a public hearing. It was well attended. We had neighborhood meetings, and after the first Planning Commission meeting, our group did some additional outreach above and beyond the neighborhood meeting. And we went out and met with the most affected property owners, the people who back up to the notch that Ms. Green referenced. We also met one-on-one with a number of neighbors. Mr. Huddleston and I also met at his meeting, at his office. We had a meeting, a small group of folks, and then we had a number of one-on-one meetings and conversations with folks. So we tried very hard to understand the concerns and questions that the neighbors had, and we've made accommodations and have amended our application to reflect those concerns and questions that the neighbors proposed to us. Mr. Caldwell is going to give a brief presentation. He's going to walk you through the application and the accommodations we've made. And then we also are proposing a set of restrictive covenants that will prohibit certain uses and certain materials that we don't feel are appropriate for this area of our community. And so, Mr., I'll hand over the podium to Mr. Caldwell, and then I'll give a brief presentation.
Thank you, Brick. Again, if I can get the PowerPoint up on the screen there. Again, and I'll just kind of walk everybody through our application here again, just an aerial showing how the properties that we are representing, because I believe the way it's written in basically what Margaret Ann went through, is 64 acres, but actually we're only representing 54 acres of that application. So as you can see, how it fits within the overall neighborhood and community there at the intersection. This is basically the configuration of the 11 parcels that are part of our application. You see two larger properties that are owned by the Palmers and the Lasseters, referenced by properties A and B there, and the rest of the properties are basically what fronts along Haynes there. They range anywhere from one to two acres in size. And again, this group got together collectively, understanding that what one did affected the other, and rather than come in in a piecemeal fashion, this was an opportunity to request this zoning as a whole, which gave us an opportunity to address the issues as a whole as well, because obviously we heard many concerns from the neighborhood, from the Planning Commission, as we have traversed through the process that we've gone through to this point. As Brick and Margaret Ann have touched on, obviously drainage is a big concern that we heard out there. This is just a part of a larger drainage basin for which a study was done three years ago by Huddleston Steel and Bill Huddleston's group there. And I'll touch on this later, how we've provided opportunities as we've addressed the zoning configuration to be part of the solution, where we can provide opportunities to implement the solutions that will help solve some of the issues out there. Again, as you look at this corridor, again, I think it's important to look at the land uses along Memorial Boulevard. As you may expect, this is a five-lane arterial. You see 31 different commercial businesses that exist along that corridor already, as you might expect along there. And this is just going from the north, where the Haynes and the Jewel property were just, Gerald property, I'm sorry, was just rezoned down to the south, where Adams Place exists. So basically, you've already seen a number of commercial development occurring along the corridor, and of course, that has proved out in the zoning, as you see here, the three corners already have commercial uses. And as you go to the north, that has developed in that fashion, and to the south, and I believe we're even missing the recent strip there that was on the west side of Memorial there that was recently rezoned on the Haynes property. As Margaret Ann said, we initially came in with Commercial Highway on the entire piece after going through the neighborhood meetings, the individual meetings that Brick and Bill had with a number of the adjacent property owners, through the workshop, through the public hearing, and also from that, staff recommendations that came out from that, we amended our application as we went through the process to reflect what Margaret Ann had mentioned. And a lot of this, again, was in response to the neighborhood concerns. This is a little bit bigger image than what Margaret Ann had in the back. Again, you've got the RS 15, which is, we refer to as the notch property, and really that is remaining that for a couple of reasons. Basically, we had a lot of concerns by the neighbors that backed up that directly. As you can see, kind of the south of that, the neighbors that abutted to the back there had much bigger backyards, a lot of concern with the neighbors that backed up directly to that, in fact, that they didn't have such a large backyard. It also provided an opportunity to implement part of the drainage solution to that area. So subsequently, as we went through the process, realized with staff's recommendation that it was beneficial to keep that as RS 15, that would basically keep that from being developed in any commercial form, in any way, shape, or fashion. The other thing we heard was basically the interface between Palmer Heights and concern over the Commercial Highway District. Then we established basically that 250-foot commercial fringe strip as a transitional zoning between that and the CH, and that is approximately 10 acres, and then the remaining 45 acres is the Commercial Highway. And that effectively lines up with Wendellwood. You'll see Wendellwood to the south that basically provides the back access to the Irongate Development and the Krogers back there. So strategically aligned like that to address access, as I'll show you in some other slides here, as well as to accommodate the transitional concerns that we heard from the neighborhood. Again, several things we heard about drainage, the buffers along that south edge, and how we handle access into the property and traffic. And again, this is part of the design solution, and I'm going to kind of touch base on the southern edge. Basically, what you see on here is a 20-foot drainage easement that basically is established up against the Palmer Heights residence, which will have either basically a drainage ditch or a drainage pipe that will be part of the drainage solution there. You see in the notch area basically is where one of a series of detention water quality facilities will be implemented to treat the water and slow it down as it traverses further to the west as part of the overall drainage basin solution there. So basically, what that allows us to do is basically will help to solve some of the drainage problems that are occurring in Palmer Heights directly behind it, because they'll have the ability to get into that drainage ditch where some flooding is occurring right now. Basically, as you move further into the property, we have agreed, and Brick's going to touch on this, in the restrictive covenants, to implement a 20-foot buffer, which is five-foot additional buffer than what's called for in the zoning ordinance. So effectively, what we have created is in lieu of the 15-foot minimum buffer that's required under normal, under the CF transitional buffer there, we have effectively a 40-foot buffer there, so 40-foot separation. So again, more than double of what is required in the zoning ordinance as a result of trying to solve the drainage and addressing what we heard from the neighbors as well. In addition, we have also agreed to, instead of six-foot tall evergreens, this will be written in the restrictive covenants that Brick will touch upon, we've agreed to do those at eight foot at planting height in lieu of the six-foot that is part of the original criteria. Again, transportation, access, staff has always asked us to look at this collectively as we're coming in with the piece of property, obviously with access on Memorial being a concern, protecting the ability to provide opportunities for signalization. And also, I think, because these are coming in collectively, an opportunity to provide interconnectivity within the development, and that's a benefit, I think, of all these folks working together. As you look at this in more detail, you'll see basically three access points along Memorial with that third access point to the north, all those aligning actually with the State Farm Facility headquarters to the east there. And those would be the three primary access points with the signal occurring at the northernmost side of it. And then again, the primary access with the ability to connect internally lining up with Wendellwood. As you look at this a little bit more in detail as far as the primary accesses, you can see that the spacing, and we worked hard with, we made sure we've understood this from the staff, that we're providing the proper basically separations between those accesses that work for signalization. Certainly understand, as development comes before the Planning Commission, that we would anticipate traffic studies would be part of that, and there would probably be additional improvements required in the form of acceleration or deceleration lanes along both Haynes and Memorial there. So again, just looking at collectively, make sure we plan for that properly. With that, I'm going to let kind of Brick walk you through the restrictive covenants that we're offering as part of that.
Okay, I just want, before Brick presents, I want to make sure that it's clear to city council and the folks before the public hearing is opening or opens, that you know the properties that are being included in the area. Mr. Caldwell is only representing some of the applicants, so the maps that he went through look a little different than the map that is the ordinance map. And what I have on the screen and what you have in your packet is the actual properties that are the properties that are being considered for a zoning change. And I just, and I know that you probably noticed that difference, that the maps he had were a little different, identified fewer parcels. But I just want you to be clear, and then anybody who cares to participate in the public hearing, to know that the ordinance map is the map that I've included includes all 18 of these parcels that are shaded orange and blue. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everyone. Will you be using this?
Appreciate it, Mrs. Green. The following is a summary of the high points of some restrictive covenants that we're proposing in response to concerns expressed by the neighbors and in an effort to accommodate those concerns. As a rule, restrictive covenants are private. They will not be enforced by the city. They are a contractual right that runs through the land. They are a contractual right that runs with the land, but they do have real teeth. They'll be recorded in the registrar's office, they'll run with the land, and they will shape the future development of the property. One thing that we're concerned with is the preservation of the existing trees. Perimeter trees on the tracks in question will be preserved. Dead or damaged trees will be removed or trimmed as necessary for safety and aesthetic purposes. Also, trees that are required for the drainage structures and other developments, other portions of the development would have to be removed as necessary. But there'll be, will be an effort made to preserve perimeter trees when possible. Prohibited uses, we'll have an extensive list of prohibited uses. But a couple of high points that I want to mention, there will be an outlaw, a ban on any adult-oriented businesses, communication towers, tattoo parlors, mobile home parks, and then there'll be a list of other uses that we just don't feel is appropriate for this corner of our city. Building materials, primary building materials for the building facades will be brick, textured metal siding with architectural features, stone, real or faux, marble, score, precast concrete, smooth fiber cement siding, stucco or synthetic stucco, ephes or synthetic, other synthetic materials. Masonry materials are also allowable. So an effort is going to be made to have what we would consider attractive building materials, stone, brick, masonry materials. Vinyl will only be allowed in soffits, trims, and windows, but not otherwise, and corrugated metal will be prohibited. Landscaping, screening, and buffering is an important part of this project, as Randy touched on. Those items that is landscaping, buffering, and screening will be used in an effort to respect the integrity and the privacy of the existing single-family residential neighborhoods in this area, and shall be applied to all developments on the properties we're representing. Buffers for commercial properties adjacent to existing single-family residential neighborhoods shall comply with the following standards, and what I'm talking about there is the Palmer Heights properties that back up to the properties that we're representing. Parcels shall have a minimum buffer of 20 feet wide. This is above and beyond your general buffering requirement of 15 feet that Randy touched on, and they'll be a type D density buffer. Evergreen plantings, as Randy touched on, will be two feet higher than is required by your ordinance, so they'll be eight feet high rather than the six feet high that is generally required. Huddleston Steel conducted a drainage study of this area and identified the need, as Randy touched on, for a 20-foot wide drainage easement in the back of the Palmer Heights subdivision on this property. That 20-foot wide drainage easement in conjunction with a 20-foot wide landscape buffer would create 20 plus 20, so 40, feet of separation between any development on our client's property and the neighboring Palmer Heights subdivision. The foregoing was a summary of the voluntary commitments that my clients have made in an effort to be good neighbors and to shape good development. These commitments, I will draft into a set of restrictive covenants. Those restrictive covenants will be a formal set that are recorded in the registrar's office before the third and final reading at the city council. And in that way, you can police whether or not we're meeting our obligations there. I'm going to give some brief conclusionary remarks. In conclusion, I hope that the city council sees this as a land use decision. Memorial is a five-lane arterial road. This area of Memorial, that is the corner of Memorial, Haynes, and Dejarnet, three of the corners there are already developed as commercial. You've got State Farm, you've got Sportscom, and then you've got the Rite Aid and the other developments on the Haynes, the former Jimmy Haynes property. So you've got three of the four corners that are already commercial, and this is just the fourth corner that we're asking for you to zone commercial. And that zoning would be consistent with the other existing uses that predominate the Memorial corridor. That is, it's predominantly commercial. Our team, including Mr. Bill Huddleston, will be here to answer any questions you may have, and we just ask you respectfully to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions by council members before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Patrick Jones. I live at 2614 Morgan Road. I neither speak for or against, but kudos to Joseph, Planning Commission, Brick and his team. There's a difference, I think, between doing the right thing and doing things right, and I wanted to speak relative to two things. First, the drainage issue. Doing things right may be to follow the recommendations, but not completely follow them. That is to say, we'll do a partial job, and we'll let the developer come back in, spend his money, and complete the drainage in terms of the spine, the drainage in terms of the detention retention. I think that's doing things right, but I would ask the council to do the right thing, and that is to take the engineer's recommendation, do it right the first time, so that there doesn't have to be anybody coming back and doing anything relative to the spine and the detention retention ditches. That minimizes the risk of homeowners in the Palmer Heights area, or those in Hooper's Bottom, having any potential issues. So my first comment to the council is do the right thing and follow the recommendation of the engineer, and do the detention retention spine as recommended the first time. Second thing I'd like to say is just a generic comment, and that is that back in the day when Mayor Westbrook's and the then-council was in place, I doubt very seriously they envisioned the city of Murfreesboro growing exponentially as it has to where it is today. So doing things right is having Joseph and his team put together recommendations, feedback from the public, bring it to the council, feedback from the public, deal with things one by one. That's doing things right. Doing the right thing, I think, is having a long-term plan, where residents, business, commercial developers, everybody has some sense of feeling, is this is where we're heading 15, 20 years from now, so that nobody has to worry about anything, nothing has to surprise anyone. Here's our plan. So I would encourage the council to put together a long-range plan. I think that's doing the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak for or against?
Old and slow, but I'll get there. Okay. My name's Tom Davis. I live at 502 Blue Belt. I have to admit to being conflicted tonight for a variety of reasons. I've had several good conversations with Brick Murphy and his team, and I'm so greatly appreciative of the applicants for what they've done to make compromises and try to make the plan smooth as far as the interface with the existing residential community and what we're going to see as a future commercial development. I mean, it's a given that this is all going to get developed, the question has just always been how. And I do appreciate their efforts to make compromises. And I've been approving of what they've done with the commercial fringe. I've been very vocal and open about it, and I've taken some heat from it, but I'm a man of my convictions, and I stand behind what I say. I've had people tell me they don't know why I've been telling them this was a good deal, and I said, "I never told anybody it was a good deal." I said, "It was the best deal we were going to get, and half a loaf is better than none, and we've never gotten a crumb before." And now we're getting a commercial fringe strip, which I think makes a very good model for how we interface in the future with Murfreesboro with new commercial development adjacent to existing longstanding residential neighborhoods. That being said, this one's a little different because you're reaching into my pocket to make it happen, because you're going to be spending public funds, which are my funds, for a drainage project to, otherwise, as Brick said, and we talked about, this will never be developed if we don't fix the drainage in this area. This area of Palmer Heights and adjacent has been subject to these drainage problems for decades, and nothing's been done about it. Nothing's been done about it. All of a sudden, we've got a bunch of applicants here saying, "Let's do some commercial development," and the city's jumping through its butt to try to make this happen, and I have a problem with that. If my property was adjacent to this, and it's not, and was subject to these longstanding drainage problems, I'd be majorly upset that my concerns had been ignored for 25, 30 years, but all of a sudden we want to rezone this area commercial and we're going to fix it. I have several questions. Do we have a final design for the stormwater improvements? If we do, I'd like to see it. Do we have a final cost estimate for the stormwater improvements? If so, I want to see it. I'm a registered professional civil engineer. I'm able to evaluate this. We took $425,000 from the Stormwater Improvement Fund to pay for this. What are we getting? I want to see it. As Mr. Jones said, we were told this project would provide the spine for the developments, but then anybody who wanted to connect into it would have to pay to connect and develop. And now, apparently, from what we were told by Sam Huddleston at the last planning commission meeting that I attended, that that means that the residents have to pay for it too. Whereas if we'd have fixed it 20 years ago, we could have probably done it. And I understand, you know, if what you do for the residents, you have to do for the developers. And I also understand this is a beautiful opportunity, if it's going to be zone commercial, to get the developers to pay for the bulk of it. I understand how the game is played, but I think we've left a lot of people out in the cold for a number of years, and maybe it's time that we kind of pay the piper at the same time. What kind of impact fees are the developers going to have to pay to hook up to the system? How are these fees going to be calculated? Are they going to go back into the stormwater fund? How are we going to be able to know that they are paying their entire costs, and that it's not actually a shell game, and that we're not unwittingly subsidizing the development in this area as the taxpayers? How are we going to be able to know that the entire costs of future development are coming out of private funds, not taxpayer dollars, and that we will know when we've broken even on this, or hopefully do even better than that? We've been talking about the potential of widening Haynes Drive even now, even though it's not on the major thoroughfare plan, and we were told that it'd be at least a year before it is. This development could be one big development, could be three developments, could be 11 developments. We don't know what's going there, but we've already decided where the signalization points are going to be, and that we're going to widen Haynes Drive. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. The announcement that Mayor Bragg made a couple of weeks ago about finally devoting some money to doing a master development plan for this area of Murfreesboro was like some of the best news I've heard in a long time. My hat's off to Pam Yoko for starting this drive a number of years ago, and I've been up here before. I tell you, you know I support a master plan. This area that we're talking about, this 60, 90, whatever acres, is the jewel in the crown of this part of Murfreesboro. And if we approve it for commercial development and then go talking about a master plan, we're closing the barn door after the horses are already out. We need to go, if we're going to talk about a master plan for the area, then let's do it now, based on what things look like now, and include this area in the planning. You know, I don't want to start a discussion about a master plan, which is an effort I would certainly like to participate in, with this area already zoned commercial, and we've already decided where we're going to put traffic lights and what we're going to let go in where. I'd prefer to stop now, slow down, and if we're going to discuss a master development plan for this area, do it before we zone this area commercial. And again, I don't want to put a burden on the applicants. I understand that they want to develop it, but again, this is the jewel in the crown, and once this is zoned commercial, there's really not a whole lot of area left in the part of North Murfreesboro to talk about. What are we planning development on? The best pieces are already gone. So let's stop now and start the master plan now, and discuss commercial zoning of this area after that. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak for or against? Anyone else? Last chance. If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Memorial Boulevard to Highway Commercial CH District and Commercial Fringe CF District.
Move for approval.
Mr. Young moves for approval. Does he second?
Mayor, before we second that, can I ask a question?
Why don't we second at first and see if we want to talk about it?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, Mr. Smollett.
Okay. Mr. Jones, I'm glad to hear that you're in favor of a master plan, because I think we're all in favor of that, and I think Tom referred to it as well. I'm not sure what difference it makes as far as the commercial on this property as to whether or not we do it before or after, because we know that inevitably this property is going to become commercial property, and there's no doubt about that, because it's on a five-lane road, and it can't really be developed as residential property, I don't think. We do need to recover, I do think, some of the money that we're investing in this ditch project, and I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Lyons, what's the procedure that we would go through in order to try and recover some of the money that would be invested into the ditch?
I think we've got a variety of options. One of the probably most typical tools that we've used have been assessment districts, where, again, when we try to master plan, whether it be a road, sewer, or storm sewer improvements, when the city can do that on the front end in a master planned fashion, it tends to be done comprehensively, it gets the work done more quickly, and then as folks tie onto it, they have to pay their fair share. So I think we've got, you know, some options. We've calculated that on a single-family equivalent, we've calculated on a per-acre basis. We really look at the individual project to see what's going to make the most sense.
I was delighted this morning, as I rode through the Palmer Heights neighborhood and the Memorial area out there, to see that there wasn't any water standing, which I think is a good sign that maybe the system sometimes works better than we think, because we did have a lot of rain out there yesterday. And in talking with Mr. Huddleston, I understand that as far as the spine that you're talking about tapping onto, once we get this backbone in place that will drain the water, my impression is that there will not be any private property on the backside of it that will need any access to it, because it will drain automatically because of its location next to the ditch. So I don't think that's going to be a problem. I don't think we're looking at any cost property owners to be, to their advantage on this particular property. And certainly, I want to thank Randy and Brick and those guys for putting those restrictive covenants in place, because that's really the dealmaker, as far as I'm concerned, on this, because I think you've done a fantastic job of communicating with the neighborhood, and everybody out in North Murfreesboro has certainly had an opportunity to voice their opinion at one of the many meetings that you've held. And I thank you for your continued effort to make it a viable and doable project, so thank you.
Mr. McFarland.
The one question on, or not necessarily a question, I guess it would be more of a comment, that when they're looking at the traffic signalization, those are not, or I guess it would be a question, those are not going to be definite locations of signalization, because we don't determine that. I think the state determines that, but we're trying to pre-plan? Is that what you're looking at there?
Actually, just a little bit of both, Mr. McFarland. The quantities that the state would look for in determining and approving a single location, they're quantifiable. We have a pretty good idea what they are. There's a certain amount of spacing, and in fact, not only is there a certain amount of spacing available on Memorial, there is also a good opportunity, and that opportunity is in line with an existing access drive into the State Farm parking lot, which is a huge impact on the traffic there. So what we want to do is target a potential location for a traffic signal on Memorial, and then focus development to that and to those location points. We also know that between locations with signals, there can be sort of the in-between areas that would be unsignalized, that have certain spacing that still allow for proper transitions, proper right turns and left turns. We want to protect those areas. We don't want to see streets align and too many streets improperly, we don't want to see too many streets intersecting the main arterial. We want to see them properly spaced. So we've got a pretty good idea of where those are, and have a very comfortable feeling that if the warrants are met... that if the warrants are met, the state would approve them at these specific locations that we've identified.
Several years ago, when this development came forward, I think it was originally brought to the Planning Commission as a, as a Publix, and, or a retail site, where if I remember, there was going to be four or five acres of drain, of retention on the front of the, the, the property, and they were looking at maybe going under Memorial and draining back to Sinkin Creek.
Well, that was a Publix, and, and, and actually, one of the problems with that development plan was the fact that they were wanting to develop property, and they had a very poor understanding of the drainage conditions in Murfreesboro. They seemed to have a willingness to recognize that the city has sinkholes, and that their answer to the drainage was to dig, dig a big hole and put a pump in it, and then pump it into Memorial, and it would go wherever the street system allowed it, which in this case was right back onto the property. And until they could identify a proper drainage plan, or a, until there was a better understanding of the drainage conditions, the staff had no comfort level with allowing that to move forward.
So I guess a question was asked on, you know, how do we solve this, this drainage issue? And is that why staff that you had recommended when the original applicant had come, that you tried to get them all to work together to be able to bring this in, in mass, to be able to solve those drainage issues?
Yes, sir, in part, I did. First of all, I want to just comment on the drainage program. The city, after the ill-fated application that we referred to back in 2005, we heard a lot of testimony about drainage in the area during that public hearing process, and during the time that that was before the Plan Commission. We got a lot of phone calls. So the staff decided that we needed to study the drainage in North Murfreesboro, north of Haynes Drive, and develop a management plan, not just for this particular area, but for basically the area that drains into Dry Branch over, on the other side of Memorial, the area around State Farm, the area around Hooper's Bottom, everything north of Haynes Drive, up to Thompson Lane and to Compton Road. It's a very large area. In 2010, we began to have, we had a public meeting just right after the big flood, and we had a lot of very good testimony, that people came and were able to talk to us about. They were able to show us photographs, and we learned a lot about the drainage. With that, we identified certain management for a lot of the sub-basins in that plan. And that was, that's been a very valuable tool for, for planning as review plans. This sub-basin, we identified the need to be able to do, construct some improvements to see some relief for some, what we call nuisance water. It's, it's hard to call it hazard water, because it doesn't flow through people's houses, but it does saturate the ground, it does get into people's yards, it does have a tendency to get under their houses. It does cause mosquito problems. It is water that is coming off the public right-of-way, and we felt that this is an area that we need to focus some of the city's stormwater funds and our stormwater program efforts into. And that's, it's just happenstance in, in some respects that, while the staff was working on that program, this application was made. They're different things, one is not motivated by the other, but they do have a close relationship because of the place in the community where they're located.
Mayor, the reason I ask that is I think this is a prime opportunity, that these properties cannot develop without a drainage plan being in, in place. You know, we, we talk about growth paying for growth, and this is another, or, an opportunity where I, I would not be in favor of piecemealing as the properties develop, getting the drainage in place, because I think what that, when you have, in my experience in the line of work I'm in, when you have five or six different contractors who are trying to do one job, you get five or six different interpretations. So I think this is a, a prime example, we can get this done, set up an assessment district, much like what we did on Osburn Lane, and we have other areas, and we let the developers pay for it when they come in to get their applications, and then we can tell the residents that we know the drainage has been completed, that it was done right the first time, and, and then that way, it's, we do what we're supposed to do, which is protect our residents.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Anyone else, you have this motion before you. Are there any other questions or comments? You have a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Gilli. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on June 13, 2013, will conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to a planned residential development, PRD District, for approximately 12.6 acres located along Memorial Boulevard. Mr. Ross Bradley is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the June 23, 2013, issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green, welcome again.
Thank you, sir. Our second public hearing this evening is to consider amending the planned residential district zone for property that's located south of West Thompson Lane and west of Memorial Boulevard, Highway 231. This property was zoned PRD earlier this year, 2013, from its commercial highway district to PRD. Since those plans have been approved, the applicant has, has wanted to make some changes to the program, which staff considers not to be minor changes, and thereby would require approval of both the Planning Commission and City Council, and an amendment of the PRD ordinance. The property is located adjacent to Irma Segal, Irma Segal Elementary School, which is zoned RS-15, located north of property's zone CH and RM-16, CH is Highway Commercial District. RM-16 is one of our multifamily district zones. The properties are located between this parcel and West Thompson Lane and Memorial Boulevard, are zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. The changes are outlined in the program book that you have on your iPad, and also, there should have been a program book couriered to you this week, which will outline those changes. Essentially, the roof design will be changing from a gable to a flat roof, and it will have a parapet, because the HVAC units will be roof-mounted, the height will be decreased, and then EFS will be permitted as a secondary material. And they, there's a letter from Mr. David Code outlining the changes, in addition to the booklet, which will have the specific changes. Any of the color selection of the building, the, the applicant has committed to bring it to the Planning Department, having the Planning Director approve that prior to it being used. But Mr. David Code is here this evening, and he'd like to go through the changes, the program book with you. If you have questions about this application, I'll be glad to answer them at any time. And at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Code up to the lectern. I did want to mention that the Planning Commission did unanimously vote to recommend this PRD amendment.
Did you say the height was elevated or lowered?
Lowered.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Code?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Good evening. My name is David Code, and I'm with the firm of Kimley Horn Associates, and appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight to make some amendments to a PUD, a PRD that you've already previously approved. I'll flip directly over to two of the exhibits that have been modified. The first exhibit is here showing elevation, and the change that you would notice from the original to this is going from a pitched roof to a flat roof. All the, in the original approval, we had a pitched roof, and all the air conditioning units were on the ground, and we'd like to modify that to go more with a flat roof and the parapet wall, and the units up on top, allowing us to have more landscaping and less clutter on the ground plane itself. This is another illustration that was done, again, changing from a pitched roof to a flat roof. With that, obviously, the architectural elevation has been amended to go to a flat roof style, which is more, it's much more of an urban style than a suburban style. And with that, I'll answer any questions, because those are truly the modifications that we've made.
Any questions for Mr. Code before I open the public hearing?
Mr. Code, you're taking the air conditioners off the, the ground and putting them on the roof.
That would be correct.
Okay. And hiding.
Yes, sir.
Except from the air.
Got me.
All right, anything else before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to amend a PRD located along Memorial Boulevard. Mr. Gilli, Mr. Washington, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Before we go on, gentlemen, I would like to make a proclamation and ask Lanny Goodwin with our Parks and Recreation Department, please come forward.
Lanny, are any of your people here?
Are you the sole?
I'm the lone ranger.
The lone ranger, okay. Well, it's my pleasure, on behalf of the council, to issue a proclamation making and recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. We think our city is within a park because of the way you take care of it, and we appreciate those efforts, and there are lots of reasons, because it is an integral part of the community. It's vitally important to establish and maintaining quality of life, ensuring health and of our citizens, and contributing to economic and environmental well-being. It is, increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attractions and retention of business, and crime reduction. You also improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to develop and produce habitat for wildlife. Heaven knows we've got a lot of wildlife.
We sure do.
Around here, don't we?
And we saw the evidence out in the lobby.
Did you?
Yeah.
Oh, all the bird pictures and everything else we've got out there.
That's right.
You're exactly right.
Those are from our local.
For ensuring ecological beauty of our community and providing a safe place for our children and adults to connect with nature. And this is something the House of Representatives was able to do. They have designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Who knew that the U.S. House of Representatives could get anything done? But I am absolutely certain that they have made the right decision here, and on behalf of the council and as mayor, I make this Park and Recreation Month, July 2013, in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Lanny, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Lanny, you make it wonderful. Thank you very much. You may have a few words you want to say about our Parks and Recreation and programs, and kind of what's going on.
Well, Mayor, I just want to say thank you to the council and to the commission for all the great things that you support. One is coming up this weekend, Uncle Dave Making Days, and we want to make sure that everybody knows to come out. We put in a good weather prayer. We hope that it's going to be good this year. We know Saturday was rained out last year. But the Fourth of July, the, all the events that we try to provide to the public is really a tribute to all of our citizens and volunteers. You see them at the ballparks, you see them at all of our locations, coming out and playing and really having a great time in Murfreesboro. And we just want to thank them, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And you've got two members of your Parks and Recreation Commission here tonight?
Yes, Ms. Madeline Gels Harris and Mr. Smotherman serve on our Parks and Recreation Commission and do a great job.
And thank you. We appreciate their efforts, too. Thank you very much. Both of you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Lanny's humble and won't say, but the TYBPA State Championship, or TYBBA State Championship is this weekend out at Barfield, and the BPA World Series is at Barfield Park the last of this month, which brings in, how many teams, Lanny?
Over 100 teams to Murfreesboro, and we're very proud that we can fill the hotels. So this year, we have 63 tournaments scheduled within our park system. So, and it, we estimate that that's about 25 million economic impact.
And let me tell you what, everybody that set, that schedules something on Saturday or Sunday, our Parks and Recreation people are there, ready to go, no matter whether it's holidays, rain, storms, snow, sleet, they are there every time there's an event, and they've got a smile on their face and ready to go to work and excited about it. It means a lot to us, Lanny, and congratulations to you and your staff, and we certainly are proud to recognize you this month.
Thank you, sir.
Back in April, we had the mayor's walk, and they were there with bells and whistles on. I mean, every time there's something at Parks and Recreation, those folks are excited to be there and excited for us to be there to participate with them, and you really do an excellent and outstanding job. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the planner to schedule a public hearing to consider an annexation progress report for an area effective for six months, located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway. Mr. Lewis, I apologize for jumping in there on you, but you can take over now.
Okay, thank you. Public Chapter 1101 of 1998 enacted by the General Assembly requires that six months after the effective date of an, of an annexation and annually thereafter, until services have been extended according to such plan, a municipality must publish in a newspaper of general circulation a progress report for the extension of such services and any changes proposed therein. The law further requires that the legislative body of the municipality hold a public hearing on such progress reports after publication of notice in the newspaper. The annexation for an area described below has been effective for at least six months. The area includes approximately 12.94 acres north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway. The effective date of annexation was October 16, 2010. Planning staff recommends the City Council schedule a public hearing to consider the progress report of the planned services for this annexed area. Attached in your agenda materials is a copy of the progress report and an illustration of the area. The council needs to schedule a public hearing date and authorize the city recorder to publish a public notice.
Ms. McGannon?
Mayor, I would suggest August 8.
Some move. Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Mr. Gilli, Mr. Young, please call the roll. Ms. Tucker?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Lewis, thank you very much. Now we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board with regards to a draft of the financial management policies for the City of Murfreesboro Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Mr. Darren Gore, welcome.
Mayor?
Again.
Thank you very much for entertaining me this, this evening. If I can get my PowerPoint up. It's going to be, it's, it's a boring PowerPoint, I will go ahead and admit this.
But it is a PowerPoint.
But it's financial management policies. I don't know, maybe Aaron or Doug could spice it up a little bit more than an engineer, but we'll go through them. I think this is long, long awaited. So thank you. I'll go through this, it's only about 11 slides, should be fairly quickly, and then we can have questions from the council. What I want to go through first are just the highlights of the financial management General financial policy, component of, of the document that you have in your packet. Basically, this looks at setting up, I would say, the goalposts for the minimum, or for the working capital reserve fund. Basically, we've looked at setting a basement or a basement level of 1.6 million roughly, which represents 12 months of operating expenses for the stormwater operating expenses, and looking at a ceiling not to exceed a 60-month operating expenses, or roughly 8.3 million dollars. And to the extent practical, the cost of the system, or cost of the storms, expansion of the storm sewer system shall be recovered from parties responsible for that expansion. In other words, growth shall pay for growth. With regards to debt management policies, it has always been the goal of the Stormwater Fund not to incur any debt, but in the event that debt is incurred, if there is a project that warrants going out and getting loan, then the minimum annual debt service coverage ratio shall be greater than 1.2, and the city shall maintain debt service as a percent of revenue at or below 35% of revenues. The rates, fees, and charges policies. Annual revenues and cash reserves shall provide not less than 20% of the funds required for the city's CIP. I think this is consistent and complements maintaining 12 months of operating expenses as a minimum working capital reserve balance. The city's rates, fees, and charges shall be reviewed on an annual basis to ensure levels are adequately funding the city's financial capital and operational goals, and the city shall consider using the services of a qualified independent consultant to conduct a comprehensive... conduct a comprehensive rate study at approximately five-year intervals. The fund participation policy. I think after all the discussion and all the ideas and the brainstorming that we came forward with, we backed off a little bit and just tried to keep this simple, in essence stating that should the city choose to participate in serving a project that serves a larger identified need and fulfills a public purpose, or is in accordance with an approved master plan, then the city shall prepare a schedule that defines the level of stormwater fund participation by the city and submit the proposal to the Water and Sewer Board for recommendation and subsequent consideration by the city council. I think our thoughts here was this just maintains flexibility. It opens up the option to looking at each project on a case-by-case basis, using common sense, using protocols that we've used in the past, as we mentioned, in special assessment areas on a per capita or on an acreage basis. It just offers discretion. And each proposal would be prepared as staff would recommend it, as the city would, council and board would approve it. The annual budgeting process, we do have some things in here, a couple of different acronyms, but statement of strategic issues and policies. This is something that we kind of pulled off of OWASA, Orange County Water and Sewer Authority of North Carolina. But basically, I think it's smart that as we're going through developing pro-formas and capital improvement projects, that we basically have a statement of strategic issues and policies. And I think that would dovetail nicely with the fact that we do have an ongoing MS4 NPDES for National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit that's renewed every five years. And so we could kind of dovetail our strategic issues and policies with our five-year permit that's renewed. Also, I think in every instance, financial planning assumptions and a background information document, this would be real similar, I think, what you got received at the March 21 special joint meeting that gave a more detailed outline of what the capital improvement projects were, gave you a little bit of more detail on the financial assumptions that we were, such as incorporating street sweeping and maybe some other general fund operations that may be planned into the five-year CIP or pro forma. And then obviously, the five-year capital improvement plan, budget, and a pro forma. I think that's a predictive metric. We're trying to give you a horizon or a look into the future over a five-year window. And I think it's been very useful to me, very useful to our department. Hopefully, you found it useful in, as we've gone through these discussions, in trying to see where we're headed. And I think one thing at the Water and Sewer Department, we're really trying to develop those metrics or measurements that give you a predictive view of the future versus, you know, just where we're at presently. We want to look into the crystal ball just a little bit better. Going to that five-year CIP and that five-year window, we do want to kind of look at the request made of staff during the budget process of looking at what a 25% reduction in the stormwater fee would look like. I'm going to show the graph that was presented at March 21. This basically is a graph of just the working capital reserve balance over a five-year timeframe to expand about $11.4 million in stormwater projects.
Why don't you explain yellow and red and...
The yellow...
You can't see.
I'm sorry. The yellow is the working capital reserve balance, starting out at around $5.5 million and drawing down to less...
What year is that?
That's end of year FY14.
Okay.
I'm sorry. It's not as, it looks bigger on my screen.
Big there.
And taking it through, this was before the financial policies we just put in front of you. The red line represents 12 months of operating expenses estimated. So if you passed these financial management policies, we would not be allowed to break the red line, so to speak. So this was before we developed the financial management policies. This was our March 21 presentation to you. What we've done now is we've come back with a graph that is, one, does not break the 12 months' worth of operating expenses that we've estimated on a pro forma. We've also backed out several projects so that the five-year CIP, instead of being approximately $11.4 million expenditures, $11.4 million over five years, is more around a $6.4 million CIP over five years. In a nutshell, by reducing the fee 25%, we can cover operational expenses, annual operational expenses, by reducing the fee 25%, but it reduces the number of capital projects that the fund can fund, if that makes sense. So really, by reducing the fee, all you're doing is you are driving how many projects you want to fund with cash from the stormwater fee.
Now, go back, because this is if you take 40% of the projects out, you're still going to run below the red line in the out years, depending on what you decide to fund. But go back to the other slide.
Can I go to the next slide? This is the two kind of lined up. This is kind of the expenditure, and I can still go back, Mayor. I don't want to drive, you can drive me backwards, too. But the blue line is basically the $11.4 million worth of expenditures. That kind of shows you over that five-year horizon. And then you can see, the green line is the $6.4 million expenditures, and you can kind of see that delta. It's anywhere from a half a million to 1.5 million difference per year on outlay, capital out, or cash outlay. I can go into the, the next slides show the projects that were affected by reducing the fee by 25%.
And these are engineering firm estimates, or are these department estimates?
These are department estimates, and primarily, Mr. Sam Huddleston, Mr. Robert Haley, and myself developed these.
Thank you.
So take that with the, you know, grain of salt. We did add, we did add a few, two projects, which are neighborhood projects, which was, they equaled about $910,000, that were actually adders to what you saw originally back on March 21. What were eliminated are these particular projects. That's a deduct of about $3.3 million. It's expansion of the Malloy Lane Water Quality Pond, some water quality mitigation efforts on Bear Branch Creek, Sinking Creek Headwater Protection, best management practice, Todd's Lake Regional Wetlands Improvements, and Warrior Drive Regional Stormwater BMP. I don't have the specifics on each of those, but this is, these were some that were eliminated. Now, we do have some that were reduced in scope, and this is approximately $2.4 million that were projects that we just saw an opportunity, instead of going 100%, we could reduce it at the levels that are kind of up there, anywhere from 25% reduction to 85% reduction. Saw the opportunity just to say, these would have to maybe be postponed over, instead of a five-year horizon, maybe they could get done over a 10-year horizon. Bottom line is, we took the $11.425 million CIP that we originally showed you in March 21 and reduced that to a $6.67, like I said, 6.4 earlier, but $6.67 million capital improvement plan with a 25% fee reduction. So that, in essence, is how you would, I think the impact you would see with reducing the fee, it would be just a reduction in the number of projects that you would fund with cash.
Darren, why are you still on that slide?
Uh-huh.
When you're saying reduction of 30%, say, on the Mitchell-Nelson Drainage Project, is that an actual 30% in the expense of the money being spent on that project, or...
Yes, it's a 30% reduction in the expense. So the $150,000 would be pulled out of that, it would be a net deduct of $150,000 less than what we anticipated spending on that.
And just out of curiosity, how do you do that on a drainage project? How do you reduce it?
Well, I think some of these have, were porous pavers. Some of these may, instead of being more, and again, I would, I should probably be able to explain to you every one of these, but Sam, you want to take over a little bit? Sam helps me a lot on this. But yeah, it's either reducing, it's...
I'll do it the same way.
Yeah, I don't want to say...
Well, yeah, I understand they're different projects, and you're not going to do them the same way.
Well, I think, for example, a lot of the water quality projects, if you had a three, if you had several locations that required either an infiltration trench, or a rain garden, or some type of small pond, you just would not, and say there were three locations that those would, where things were being drained for that site, you would just eliminate one of those or two of those. In the case of a porous paver expansion, you just wouldn't do as much area. Instead of a one-acre area of porous paving, maybe you would only do a half an acre, a quarter of an acre kind of thing. Now, for conveyance systems, you're right. That really can't be, that...
You still have to convey the same amount of water.
Yeah, you'd have to, the only way you could do a conveyance reduction is if you staged it over a longer period of time. But you're right, you couldn't reduce pipe sizes or basically shorten the pipe. It would have to get, to do it right, you'd have to get it from point A to point B, and the pipe would have to be the right size.
So even with the reductions, we're still doing the job right, I guess.
Oh, yes, yes. We would not, I don't think, as far as, I consider conveyance projects or water quantity issues, public health and safety issues. And we would never shortchange a public health and safety item. That would be done per standard, proper standard of care and best practices. Okay?
Just basic, just basic.
I didn't say anything.
Let me ask you this. What percentage of our stormwater fees are commercial versus residential? Do you have an idea of what that is, what the...
It's 60, it's, it's 40% commercial, 60% residential.
Residential.
And maybe 58, 42, something like that. I looked at it the other, I actually, I can get you those exact numbers. I pulled those numbers in.
It's like 3 to 2. I mean, the commercial is more, is 50% more...
And I really don't want to have those flipped. I don't think I've got them flipped. But it's, it's, we just, you know, we have lots of residential, and the commercial, some of the commercials getting a pretty big, some of the commercial items are getting a pretty big credit. I think that's correct.
Because they're doing work themselves, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
They're doing work themselves. They're doing stormwater work themselves.
Yeah, well, a lot of the newer, the developments that have come in since the post-construction standards, they're putting their, it's a privately owned and operated BMP, and they get a credit. By complying with the city ordinance, they also receive a credit on the stormwater fee. And one of our biggest customers, like MTSU, they receive like a 65% fee because of everything that drains towards Rutherford and those large retention basins. I mean, that water never goes anywhere. It's basically held captive on site.
On camp.
But I can get you those, I got Tommy Beddix to run the GIS, and I've got the spreadsheet, and I got the numbers. I'll get those exact numbers to you.
Well, this is at least a 15-year program, NPDES, that we've been dealing with as a city. And obviously, when we started out, the city was a little bit smaller, and certainly, we spent as much time making drainage plans and trying to get people to do the right thing for a long time. The concern that I have is, I mean, you look at two of our newer subdivisions, I guess Hardwood and Pennington, one at Thompson Square, and I can't remember where Hardwood is. Is that a...
Cherrywood?
Florence, Florence Road.
Okay, on Florence Road. I mean, those are relatively new developments that all of a sudden, we've got some failure and got some issues. I'm just a little hesitant. I understand that 81 cents a month would be a 25% reduction. It's just very concerning to me what we'll have to do in the out years with the expansion of what we've had. And some of those projects I see that either are limited or shortened really kind of concern me a little bit. And I know, it seems like in the city, we try to take care of things and do it right the first time. As the fellow said, do the right thing or do it right. I'm kind of in between on this thing. 81 cents a month is certainly to push some of these programs and projects out. I'm not sure whether it's worth it to all our city residents, but I certainly defer to the council on what we decide to do. Mr. McFarland?
Mayor, I think the thing that helped me more than anything is spent, a couple of hours riding around with Mr. Huddleston and Mr. Lyons and Mr. Crumley. And Mr. Huddleston took us around and showed us these projects and really put, you know, a face with the name to say, okay, look, I want to show you this area that when we have, we've had four rain events over the last five years or so, and we had two feet of water standing in this area. Or the great examples, we went back, I guess, Mr. Lyons, what was it, 60 days ago, that we were getting phone calls on Pennington Lane and Thompson Square, and there was water in people's backyards. And so we really started researching that.
And not just water sitting there. I mean, it's big water.
Yeah, it's up on some of the fences. It was up 18 inches, two feet, that you could see the debris. And Mr. Griffith did a great job with Chris Stacy, and they go through in video camera, and all of a sudden, it's a half a million dollar project to fix. So that's the part that I'm more concerned with, is the stormwater management piece. When I see that it's helping homeowners keep water, take care of drainage issues, I'm all for that. Now, if we're putting in a rain garden to clean the water that comes off of, you know, that part I have, it's tough to deal with. But when it directly affects residents, Leaf Avenue, prime example, I think we don't know what's going to happen with some of these drainage structures that are 20 years old. And in this case, Thompson Station was, what, 18 or 15 years old?
Well, and having spent some money in the Parks and Rec out at Old Fork Park to try to show people, instead of just carving two ditches out or three ditches out and letting water run through, at least trying to show people what you can do on your property, and show commercial developers, too, how it will enhance stormwater, but enhance your property, too, by taking care of it. And so that's a positive.
Mayor, with that being said, I have been a huge voice of opinion on the stormwater fund. And I think if there's anything that we have looked at in riding around with these guys, I'm great to say when we do great on things, and I'm man enough to say where we've messed up on things. And I think that we let this one get away from us on letting the funds accumulate too much. But I don't think it was a fault necessarily of the city or the Water and Sewer Board, because I think they do a great job. It's just we didn't know. This was a new program. We didn't know really how to handle it. It was an unfunded mandate that was sent down from the federal government, and we didn't know how to deal with it. So now we do. Mr. Gore's put policies and procedures in place, and we've got a game plan moving forward.
Right. Any, yeah. Mr. Smotherman, do you have...
And I agree with Shane. I mean, I rode around with Mr. Huddleston as well and looked at the many projects that we do need to look at. And not only did we look at the ones that were visible, there were some projects that were underground that are completely hidden to the public, that we don't normally understand we're driving across water projects. And some of those we know are becoming very old and need repair. And looking at that, although I'm a huge supporter of trying to reduce the amount that taxpayers and fee payers, I guess, at this point, with rate payers would be spending, I think we probably just, if anything, if we're guilty of anything, it's probably putting some projects off that we probably should have already done or started. And now that we, I think, have a better understanding of the projects that we do have in front of us and realize what it's going to cost to do them, I certainly feel like we should probably continue on at the rate that we're at.
Did the Water and Sewer Board make a recommendation?
They did. They recommended that the council adopt these policies. And I will say, this sets a ceiling. And so it does put staff on notice that we need, we don't need to go over the 8.3, the 60 months of operating expenses. And if that does hap... And if, if that does happen, then that would, that would trigger, I think, further action by the board and council to, to maybe adjust the rate. So I think we've got, you know, by, by the end of FY16, if, if basically we don't demonstrate spending these, this money on projects that we've identified to the council, that there, that would be a trigger point. There would be a trigger there to, to cause a, the fee to be reduced if these policies are adopted.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Director.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Mr. McFarland made a motion and Mr. Smotherman seconded. All in favor, let's see. Ms. Tucker, why don't you call the roll?
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gail Sayers.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye, thank you. I appreciate you coming back to us also.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Consider recommendations of the Information Technology Director with regards to IT Strategic Master Plan Proposal. Mr. Lilly has fallen behind the Water and Sewer Board on the agenda. Mr. Lilly, my, 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 how times.
What's that been wrong?
I tell you, something's gone wrong. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, it's great to be up here again. We've, we're finishing up an assessment, pretty much a six to seven month assessment that's taken a lot of time. And before I go into the presentation, I'd like to let you know, I go into every department and some of them, some departments we spent three to four hours with assessing the business needs. You have a bunch of great people that do great work, whether it be with limited resources, no resources, and some have great resources, but they do care, they're passionate about what they do, and they get the work done. So I think that's something to hang your hat on and be proud about. And I think what's even more exciting is that, given the proper resources, that, you know, there's no telling where these employees can go with making this city everything and more of what we expect and what we're wanting to get, to get to. In talking about the, the city of Murfreesboro, there were a lot of requests. We, we kind of sat around as a core team and dreamt a little bit about what the city could be. We definitely want to make it more interactive. We want information to flow freely throughout the city and our programs to interface with each other so that we can create dashboards, reports, and we can see exactly how we're doing on a daily basis. Thus, we, I was tasked to come up with a, an IT Strategic Master Plan. It's been a long road, but we've had some great support. We've contracted on Weston and Bill Lloyd from Weston is, is here tonight in support of the, the presentation. And we're moving forward with the, the, the plan. Some things could wait until the presentation, some things could not. And I appreciate your support in, in the things that, that we were chomping at the bit to really get to, such as the website and, and different little projects, credit card processing. And it's really been a, a great win for, for the city of Murfreesboro. Now, I'll go into a brief presentation. Could go into talking megabytes and gigabytes and OSI model layers, but I figure you don't want to hear all that. So we're going to do a high level assessment, presentation of our findings. Here you'll see a roadmap. It's our roadmap from where we are to that city two dot O, what I call I-borough, interactive, interactive borough. But we, we do have a road to follow and, but I'm excited to say that we are on course and on task. First, as, as we looked at what we actually need as resources in, in the departments, we had to look at the internal drivers for change. Why do we need these resources? And several, several needs were addressed, such as growth, communications, controls, and, you know, leveling expectations. And our volume of transactions have gone up with the growth that we've experienced in the city. Some of the external drivers for change are increasing citizen expectations, transparency, change in economic conditions, state and federal regulatory mandates, focus on conservation, being green, and changing workforce. Some of the objectives for applying some of the technology that we've used is to increase efficiency, to be timely, not more timely, in our delivery of service. And also, service excellence has been a driving factor. You know, Shannon has been very, she's worked with us on this, but we want to increase our customer service. And that's something that you have asked and, and, and we're, we will, we have worked on and we will continue to increase our, our service excellence in the city of Murfreesboro. As I was talking about, we did business needs surveys with every department in the city. Topics included the scope of responsibilities, current and emergent business challenges, existing technology resources and satisfaction, and requirements for new technology. We identified key applications throughout the city. As you see, we have, we had a grading, kind of a grading pattern with these applications. You'll see that some of them are red and some of them are green. We didn't, we didn't put a yellow in here, but if we had to, to grade by an ABC format, we'd say the green was probably more of a B because we did still identify needs in, in the software that, that we identified as green. But we did have some applications in red that we did see a high priority and a, and a big need to, to look at other, other solutions. As we evaluate the IT shop, there were many departmental applications that are meeting key operational needs despite not having to formalize and centralize IT department. But we did find out overall that the IT department was very responsive and that they were very competent in doing the work that they do. They've been able to make some of the applications that were, were, were not meeting standards work for business purposes. They've been able to revise interfaces or create actual programs that, that enable those programs to, our, our staff to be successful in completing their task. And that our GIS was well structured and meeting basic needs. Some of our high level findings. Our finance and payroll applications and, and our court package as well is running from a program called COBOL. I know several people have heard of it, but these, this application is very flat and now we're looking at multi-segmented infrastructures and, and applications. So to this date, this COBOL technology is not meeting the city's needs. We also found out that there were a lot of manual and paper-based processes. Like I told you, your employees have found ways to get stuff done and they, they do it well. But in the backend, you know, a lot of times we're finding out that there's a lot of paper processes and there's a lot of department-based solutions that they've figured out how to get work done, but we want to identify those and give them the resources that they need so that they can share the data that they have amongst all other departments. There's also redundant entry and storage of data issues. And the needs to access to data, maintaining systems throughout the city, there's, there's a shortcoming there. In accessing the applications, we found that we've, we've labeled into two spots, enterprise applications and departmental applications. In that, enterprise applications would be the applications that are used by most of the departments in the city. They spread throughout the departments. That would be such as our finance, finance system, our ERP system, payroll, human resources, mobile deployment, and GIS. Back to the IT shop. One of the, the issues or the shortcomings that we have with our IT shop is that we have no IT governance onboard. IT governance is, is actually an initiative that follows the mission, values, and goals of city management. It supports those goals and it uses those goals as, as determinants to come up with our technical solutions. It would be the who, what, when, where, and why of, of why we would pick software for the city. Summary of assessment of the IT organization and people. Users are generally happy with, with performance and support. And the scope of services of the new IT department, there's a very large pent-up demand for IT services. We expect this to grow as we add applications. So we want to make sure that we structure ourselves to, to, for success and that we are able to set service level agreements and we're able to position ourselves in place for best practices to support the new structure that, that we're proposing. Currently, we are, the departments function as, as businesses under a city umbrella. And when I say that, there's different functions within the department, but we are the city of Murfreesboro and we, and we do, you know, function as so. But there are utilities, city council, there's community services and community development and public safety. And we have different applications to serve the, serve as solutions to help with each one of those silos within the city of Murfreesboro. How we integrate this model is we use the enterprise approach. So the enterprise approach is a horizontal overlay over these different departments. This is such as customer service, dispatching and routing, plan, design, and construct. We need an integrative application and data layer that sits on top of these different silos that will help us to create dashboards, reporting, and help us to measure performance so that we'll know exactly how we're doing from day to day. Key strategy, the city's information technology opportunities were prioritized by the city's project steering committee. First, highest priority has been identified as the financial information system, human resources information system, payroll, and municipal courts. Second highest priority would be the land development management, maintenance and work order management, and GIS upgrades and integration. And third highest would be the mobile deployment and integration, records management and electronic content management, and perform, performance measurement. Here you'll see a, and this is also included in your package, this is a program schedule, a proposed program schedule. Each program that we implement will take a strategic approach of actually planning, we'll construct, support, and then we will deploy. So this will be our best, this will be our best practice course of identifying and deploying applications. So this is our proposed timelines with the highest, high priority items that we've identified being first, the first deployments. This is a five-year plan, stretches out to fiscal year 2018. And last but not least, the, the bottom line. The, we've spread the cost out amongst the five years that we proposed. The total comes to around nine and a half million dollars. And that takes us to our goal of our city two dot O. Any questions?
Do you have an eye girl maintenance fee suggestion, something to pay for all this?
Well, I, I tell you, as we start, as we propose some of these, some of the software, what you will see is I'll be back in front of you with several of them with return on investment statements. So even though you, you have the expense of the software, where we've identified the redundant tasks and, and the stuff that's, that's going on in the back, in the background, what we're going to identify is where we can actually save money by spending money. So yes, I, I'm hoping to come back with you with ways to save and, and knock off a lot of that.
We're going to lose a little money, but we're going to make it up in volume.
That's right.
Is that right? I got you. That's right.
Mr. Lilly, Lilly, I'd like to say that you have definitely, since you've been onboard, taken our city to the next level as far as an IT concern. And the great, same great things you said about the various departments when you were combining and doing all your research also goes to you and your department. You all do a fabulous job. And some of the projects that you have already brought to us that we have adopted immediately, we can see how our city is going to the next level. In fact, you have us way beyond a lot of cities in our IT department and I'd like to congratulate you and your department for this. And this was an excellent report.
Thank you.
But plan, I mean.
One question, Mr. Lilly, do you envision the city going to electronic timesheet?
Yes, I do.
Good deal.
And I see that happening before the five years is.
Good deal.
That's actually been identified as one of our quick wins. As, well, when we implement our HRIS system, we'll be looking into that. And yes, I do see us going to that.
Good deal.
There has been a substantial amount of time by Mr. Lilly and Weston talking to our employees. And we've talked about the importance, importance of employee engagement and hearing from our employees on the front lines, and that's exactly what Mr. Lilly and the, and the team did, was they got and talked to the employees. What do they need to accomplish? How do they need to accomplish it? Who else do they need to participate in it? And he's correct. We've got a lot of manual processes that our very smart employees have found workarounds, but using some technology, we know we can work more efficiently, cut out some redundancy and do a better job. So really, this is a very visionary document. It's going to really transform many of the things that we do. And that's going to require a lot of work, a lot of communication and some training. But this really is a direction that I think is very exciting. It really sets the stage for us in a lot of different ways. And so, we're, we're looking forward to it.
I think you still meet with some IT directors from other places in utilities like my guy, John Floyd and Brian Robertson and that bunch.
Yes, I meet with them. We usually try to get together monthly.
That works.
And also have some people starting to meet with the director, Charlotte Mecklenburg, and some other areas to see, you know, what they're doing. We're kind of leveling what we're doing and, and helping each other out.
Yeah, the key is to go as paperless as, as you can, is the key.
And, and lastly, I, I would like, I would, wouldn't feel right if I didn't, didn't acknowledge, there are some IT staff in the, in the room tonight that are in support of, of the plan. They're very excited. They, they're passionate about what they do and I, I'd like to thank them for coming out and supporting the presentation. They work hard every day. They're here bright and early working. They, they've thought about stuff all night and they come to me with ideas, but there's no way I could get up here and, and present this plan without the confidence of knowing that they are competent and that they're ready and the readiness levels are up, up to par to do this job.
You want to recognize them at this time?
Yes, I would. We have Brian Small from the police department. We have Gerald Lee, GIS. And we have Brian Pollak from Water and Sewer Department.
Very good, thank you. All right, you have this recommendation of the IT director before you. What are your wishes?
If they're.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, if you want to ask them why, if there's some technology people here, why your VCR is still blinking twelve that may be.
Nice try.
It's because it's called a VCR.
All right. Mayor, if there are no other, and councilmen, if there are no other comments, I would like to propose that we adopt this master plan.
All right. You have a motion for Ms. Harris for this recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Gilli, thank you. A motion and second. Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gail Sayers.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye, thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Thank you.
And thanks to your co-conspirators. This time we'll consider for adoption a resolution approving the revised budget of the Evergreen Cemetery for the fiscal year 2013, 2014. Ms. Tucker.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. While compiling the budget supplemental for the state, I discovered a computation error in the revenues and fund balance section of the Evergreen Cemetery budget.
budget. They've amended their budget to correct this error and are submitting to you tonight for your approval.
All right. Any questions regarding this revised budget? Is there a motion to accept?
Some move.
Mr. McFarland, Mr. Young, thank you very much. Please call the roll. Ms. Tucker?
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, beer permit applications. Ms. Tucker?
We have two tonight. One is a new location located at 3183 South Church Street. They're pending final building and codes inspections. They've met all of our other requirements, and we recommend approval pending those inspections. We also have a convenience store with an ownership change and a name change located at 407 South Manny Avenue. They have met all of our requirements.
All right. Any questions regarding the beer permits, or is there a motion that Mr. Gilli, thank you. Is there a second?
Seven.
Mr. Washington, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, you have the statements to be considered for payment before you. Are there any questions regarding those bills, or shall we pay them? Is there a motion?
Some move. Second.
Mr. McFarland, Mr. Young, please call the roll. Ms. Tucker?
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, I recommend to you Brandon Wallace for a two-year term to fill the remaining term of Bruce Duncan on the Senior Citizens Commission. And Bruce Duncan will move to an ex-official member replacing Dr. Ron Ade, who has resigned. And appoint, recommend that we appoint J.D. Kennedy, Mark Nobles, and Alice P. Nunnery to three-year terms. I make that recommendation to you.
Before I make this motion, I want to, on TV, thank Bruce Duncan. Bruce has been a valuable, valuable leader for the Senior Citizens Commission. I'm glad that he's going to stay with us as a consultant sort of kindly. He's done a wonderful, wonderful job. Well, I knew that day was going to come one of these days. I think Candy Joyce, I think, is going to, is she doing?
She's going to be our chairman.
Okay. She'll do a wonderful job also.
All right.
Bruce was our chairman for many years.
A lot of years.
And we are going to miss his leadership.
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. Washington, is that a motion we accept?
It is. It is.
And Mr. Young, seconds. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Is there any other business from staff or council to come before the council?
Mayor, I may comment one time. I just want to say one last notice to everybody that Uncle Dave making days are going to be this weekend. That's explaining my casual attire tonight. I'm already dressed out in uniform, ready to go. We'll be having it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the 12th, 13th, 14th. The Heritage Award winners are Ricky Skaggs and Sharon White. They'll be performing Saturday night at seven o'clock. There's free parking in the parking garage here at City Hall. And we'll be starting performing tomorrow at, I won't be, but they will be, at ten o'clock. And admission will be five dollars per day, except Sunday, which will be free.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. I'm sure all of us echo your remarks. You're adjourned.